I'd like to welcome everyone to the Algonquin Regional School Committee's open meeting for One State, April 26th, and calling us into session at 6:30. Before we start our, the official meeting, I'd like to talk, have that turn this over to Mike Moserino for a special recognition of Raphael Knapp. He was in attendance for a, oh, he's a re, on cue. And right. For a significant accomplishment.
Michael, why don't you go come right up? Podium, yeah. So first of all, I just want to say, Ralph, thanks for coming tonight. Principal Bevan, and extending an invite out to Raphael Knapp's family, who are here in attendance, also with coaches, Coach Kramer, who might be here or not. And just a little bit of a brief recognition of his achievements for this winter as an outstanding wrestler on a wrestling team. Ralph was the first Algonquin wrestler to win both the All-State and All-New England tournaments. And we made this plaque for him to recognize this achievement. I already gave it as a one at his house, and I'm also going to hang this up in the Winter Wrestling Room. I'm a wall of champions for him. And in here it states, it's an outstanding wrestler achievement to Raphael Knapp from 132 pounds to 170. And then 2020, sectional's first place, divisional third. 2022, sectional's first, divisional second, All-State third, and New England's third. And then in his senior year, 2023, sectional's first, division's first, All-State first, and New England's first. So what an amazing accomplishment. He'll also be furthering his academic and athletic career at University of Buffalo. Will be wrestling on a wrestling scholarship, which is great. And we just want to say thank you very much for all your passion and dedication to the wrestling program, and this is for you.
Thank you. You'll pre-leave now if the whole meeting.
Yeah.
So at this time in the meeting, we have our first public comment section. Anyone in the public who would like to make a comment pertaining to our meeting? Next is action on minutes. We have our open meeting minutes for March 15th, 2023. Do we have a motion to accept those?
I make a motion to accept the open meeting minutes of March 15th, 2023.
So Chris, second call. All in favor? And that passes unanimously. The next minute, minutes are the executive session minutes of March 15th, 2023. We need the motion to accept and retain those at this time.
So, second.
And then Chris. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Great. If, okay, committee, I'd like to move up the approval of grants and donations because some of them have to do with Mike Moserino, and we can move his portion from there. So I believe we have to do these one by one.
Yep.
So the first grant is the end grant, mini-grant, from Joseph Early's office for holding a, it looks like for the after-graduation party. Any questions on that? So that's a motion for, to accept $1,375 for the bat.
So move.
Oh, there we go. Chris, second, second call. All in favor? You can, approval of a donation not to exceed, we'll skip over that, we'll come back in a second. Approval of $50 from the Northborough Junior Women's Club, and $100 from Brenda Debré for the age R S S buddies program. Do we need to approve donations under certain rule?
Any donation.
Acknowledge, okay. So a motion to accept that?
So move.
Okay, Karen and Kathy, one and two, there we go.
Mix it up.
All in favor? That passes unanimously. Donation of an amount of $500 from the Middlesex Savings Bank to sponsor the class of 2023 Kimball Farm Celebration.
So moved.
Joe?
Second.
Kathleen? Is that Kathleen? Okay. And so all in favor? Another unanimous. The next one, come back to the approval of donation, an amount of $43.53 from Panera Bread to the math team to support their partnership with the blister community school in London. Karen?
Second.
Kathy? Okay. All in favor? That's unanimous. And then it looks like Mike got a large donation.
Yes. Very excited about it. You may have seen in the memo, but we are pleased to announce that Algonquin Regional High School was randomly selected to receive a victory uniform giveaway from Varsity JV Varsity uniforms from BSN. And BSN is one of the largest distributors, sports apparel and uniforms in the U.S. And I have worked closely with one of our local reps, Greg Toomey, for recently for some equipment and uniforms in the past. And so we are for a total not exceeding $50,000 towards new uniforms. So as a director of athletics, I entered our program into the sweepstakes in early February, and we previously worked with BSN before in the past. And BSN was sponsoring this 2023 giveaway to support schools, building school pride and student confidence through a strong athletic brand. So Algonquin Regional High School was randomly selected in March 13th, and we were notified on March 20th that we've won. Reviewed the following, the contest rules, and have been selected without reservation by BSN Sports to receive this donation. So this donation will activate turning over our uniforms for our new, you know, for our mascot change that we've had last year from the tomahawk to a titan. We plan for the transition to take place between five to seven years originally, and this donation will allow us to move that timeline forward. And most, if not all, Varsity or JV uniforms could be done, could be converted within, by 2024. We are fortunate and excited to have this opportunity, and with your approval, we provide updates routinely on the progress that we're having. And we're hope that with your approval, we will be with our students towards the end of the school year, and the school year is coming fast, and also have a more formal announcement at the beginning of next year's school year.
Much to accept. Kathy, you fall. And any questions?
Mike, I just had a question.
Yeah.
Have you identified any teams that this money would go to?
So we have a rotation of five to seven years. We've activated that in our last, most recent school committee meeting, up to three or four years. We do, we have identified teams that are in need, specifically our JV one and JV two teams, that are in that rotation of three or four years. So I'll be working with the local company, identifying those teams. So we have, we have a plan in place. Yes.
Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you for entering this sweepstakes.
It's awesome.
I know that I'd wait to get 50 grand, but we'll take it.
It's great for our kids, and I think, you know, after the transition, we'll be able to, you know, speed up the process and get our kids in new uniforms quicker rather than later. So it's a great, great opportunity for our students.
I think just a general comment, I think it was more than just sweepstakes and random. I think they do look for schools who are rebranding and have committed to making changes. So I think the prior work that Mike in Algonquin has done with BSN, service belt, and I think also the great work of, you know, Principal Bevan and Keith Lavoie around the math and my name change, also put it, put us in a great position to consider for this type of sweepstakes, random.
It's confusing those words. Donation.
Yeah, and I will just add, I'm really grateful, Mike did this without, you know, just a lot of fanfare and just kind of put this in there, and that does, you know, that's not just like checking a box on a form. It's a little bit of hard work, and we're really proud of Mike and proud of his work, and excited to see what the uniforms look like with our new logo and all the, kind of the, I think it'll take us very far, it's exciting.
Kind of all good on the new field.
Yeah.
A lot of good things happening.
Well done, Mike.
I think I know how this vote's gonna go. All in favor? Unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
More than welcome to stay.
Okay, so that took ticked off number seven, and we'll go back to educational policy.
Sure, so a little bit on the work dots, we have the approval of the First Robotics Team overnight field trip to the first championship in Houston, Texas. So I'll turn it over to Principal Bevan to talk about the success of the robotics team and opportunity that they had and.
Sure, yeah, our, our wonderful robotics team, as they do, they compete in, in regional competitions each year, and we always are competitive. But this year, we did quite well, better than anyone anticipated, and that afforded the students opportunity to travel to Houston, Texas to participate in the world championships. And that was not something we foresaw, and they had, kind of had not, you know, completed any of the paperwork to get the, the opinions of the school committee or the school committee, so we had to like scramble to get that taken care of. But the team did very well, they competed in, in Houston, they had a minor glitch in the first round of competition, they rectified that and did well, and they had a wonderful time and are back with us safely. The trip was a big, a big success.
They had to try, somebody had to try pieces down there.
Yes, that's right, yeah.
So, you know, kudos to the advisors and stuff that, like Deco where they fly to.
Sure, yeah, we have one advisor and then four or five, and sometimes a sixth mentor from the community. And, and most of them are either parents or other community members, some are even alums, they're engineers, there are people in the, in the sciences that want to give back, and they put a lot of time and effort. And I think, I, I think they shipped it to, shipped it down, that was part of the entry fee, goes toward that, that cost. And so we were able to secure a hotel room for a team that thought they were gonna, gonna make it and didn't, and they handed their, they gave us their hotel room before. But there's a, there's a really wonderful, vibrant community under First Robotics, and they were closely together, and we saw that firsthand when Walpole High School couldn't make it, and they helped us to get our machine there and get a hotel, and it was a really exciting opportunity for our kids. They're like floating around the building, they're like walking on air, having this great experience. We had 13 students participate.
So just a congratulations to the robotics team, and a thank you to Principal Bevan for making it happen. And also thank you to the finance department for making it happen. There were a lot of conversations and logistics, and I know the robotics parents were very helpful and influential, so a lot of, a lot of quick, short-term work for making sure the kids have this great opportunity.
Yeah, and I'll add two more things. Our coach Dan Schrclin, who's wonderful, put a lot of time and effort into this, and this is a real record on, on his hard work. And looking forward to future competitions, I think what we would endeavor to do is to really hope for us to be in this position every year, and plan for coming to the split committee well in advance. And if we don't make it to these world championships or ICDC in Florida, we may ask for permission to do that, and then if it doesn't come to fruition, we don't have to go, of course, and then we won't be in the same position again. So this is a learning opportunity, it was a happy, you know, a happy way to, to learn that hard lesson, but it was a hard lesson nonetheless, yeah.
So we need a motion to approve their trip they went on. And Kathy, okay.
I can guarantee they'll come back safe.
All right, so all in favor? There we go, that was a, I should have put money on both of those. That brings us to new business, legislative update.
Sure, so just a, a brief update on the FY24 state budget process, and the House weighs in the limited release on its budget. The House included $30 additional in per pupil, chapter 70, my item, and a $30 in a separate my item, as they did in FY24. So we're hoping for additional money. The governor's budget was $30 per pupil. The House weighs and means is $60, and I think we'll continue to advocate for $100 when the budget process is finalized. Also, great news, the regional transportation my item was funded, and the House weighs means budget at 100%. So the governor's budget was 75%. I think this is the first time it was ever funded at 100%. So we'll see if that holds to the budget process, but that was great news to see at this point. And then not so good news is that the out-of-district 14% tuition cost, we're hoping to get some relief from, from the circuit breaker, additional circuit breaker funding, that has not happened, or did not happen in the House of Ways and Means budget, but we continue to advocate that this is a priority, significant dollars, and has a significant impact on our overall budget process. So we're monitoring the state budget landscape, and we anticipate to have a state budget passed hopefully by, end of June, maybe, July? So we won't know unfortunately for another several months.
Any questions? So that brings us, one of them's talking. Audit?
So the audit, a subcommittee met with the district monitor on March 23rd, and I'll turn it over to Becky just to share some brief comments about the audit in general.
Sure, so last fall, we began the process with Scanlon and Associates, and Tom Scanlon is the principal there, and three of his staff members were with us for about a week or so. They did testing of our vendor warrants, of our payroll, and then also of our grant expenditures. And we're very pleased with the information that was presented in this, in this report. There were no audit findings, there were a couple of suggestions for us. However, I think overall, I think it's something that we should be, I think the finance team is very proud of the work that they do, and I think this report does reflect that. And I don't know if any of the audit subcommittee members saw anything on the meeting that we had attended.
I wasn't sure, with the quorum, really.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, no, I just, I want to say thank you to the finance team. I mean, the community had Scanlon and Associates, they could have been more complimentary of the work that the team did and the support that they received throughout the audit. They made comments, although the opinion that they provided was unqualified for the financial statements, it was, they did not do an audit of internal controls, but they did make a point to come on the fact that they had observed the fact that we have effective controls in place, which gave us comfort. We spent a lot of time walking through the financial statements to understand the different elements of it, and, and again, they were very complimentary, so I appreciate that.
And this, kind of year after year, we're here with this, and that's fantastic.
It's great, John.
It's, it's, there's no question, it's absolutely a testament to you and your team's work, so thank you.
Appreciate it, it's not easy.
They enjoy audits.
I feel like we're in a constant.
Any other questions? Thank you, Becky.
And do you need to, oh, to accept the audit? Okay. So.
I, I make a motion that we accept the FY22 auto-report.
Second. Second, five minutes. Okay. Any questions? All in favor? Okay. Unanimous. So next, we need to appoint the district treasurer and assistant treasurer.
So at the last meeting, we were fortunate enough to appoint a district assistant treasurer, Matt, so we don't need to accomplish that goal this evening, but we do, we are required to reappoint Christine Kay at district treasurer. She continues to serve our district well, and is part of the finance, financial team. So this evening, we recommend that the school committee reappoint Christine Kay as the district treasurer for the 23-24 school year.
So we need a motion for that?
So.
Second.
Paul and Kathleen? Any questions? All in favor? Unanimous. And that brings us to our discussion and vote on school choice. I should have clarified, this is informational, next meeting will be a public hearing on this, and then a vote.
So again, I'd please this evening to communicate and share the school choice presentation. This is not the first presentation that most of you have seen on school choice. So it looks like the technology is not cooperating, so I will skip my way for the presentation. So, school choice, so it's an inter-district school choice program that has been in place in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts since 1991, so it's a well-established program. And school choice allows a parent or guardian to enroll his or her child in a school district other than the district in which the child lives. Under the school choice law, all school districts in Massachusetts are presumed to participate and admit non-resident students through school choice. So unless students opt out of, or districts opt out of school choice, a district is presumed to participate. So this evening, I'll present my recommendation to the committee. In order to withdraw from school choice, a public hearing is required. So if it's the will of the committee, a public hearing will be held at the main meeting, and then a vote will take place in terms of whether to withdraw or not. The school choice tuition for students in regular education program is $5,000 per student. The per pupil expenditure for the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District in FY22 was $19,073.32. So there's a significant discrepancy in the money we receive from accepting a school choice student to the actual cost of educating that student. The school committees may specify the schools and grades in which seats are available. For example, there was a low enrollment in a specific grade level, grade nine, we could open school choice in that specific grade level. Or we could open up school choice in all grade levels. So there's a lot of variability and decisions the school needs to make if it decided not to withdraw from school choice. And any student we admit through school choice, obviously, we do apply a nondiscrimination policy. And again, we accept all students regardless of their socioeconomic status, race, their academic need. If the number of applicants exceeds the number of seats, there's a lottery. And again, the lottery is truly not a lottery, so students are selected randomly regardless of their socioeconomic status, their race, specialized status, and so forth. So the advantages of school choice is that it is a way of generating revenue, so it's $5,000 per student. It's a means of generating revenue for many districts in the Commonwealth who do struggle financially. It allows flexibility as enrollment declines, so as we see declining enrollment, it does allow us to increase enrollment through this process, and it is a year-to-year decision to opt out. However, if you accept a freshman or a sophomore, that student has the right to remain in the district through the duration of their high school career. The disadvantage are, our disadvantages are that FY2020 per pupil expenditure compared to what we actually receive in school choice dollars, acceptance is by lottery, so you could receive a student who has a significant disciplinary record, and that can't be part of the decision whether to accept or not accept a student. Once a student is accepted, that student remains to grade 12, and there is the potential of accepting a student that requires significant resources. So those are the advantages and disadvantages. My recommendation to the committee is to withdraw from school choice for the 23-24 school year, for the reasons I just presented. Again, in order to withdraw, a public hearing is required, so that will take place at the main meeting, and then a formal vote from the committee is also required after the vote. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions about school choice? Follow the presentation.
It's much better with the.
Give the slides with a possible question, so. Tell me the recap.
So on Monday night, the Northborough citizens unanimously approve the Algonquin Regional High School budget for fiscal year 24, so we continue to have strong support from our town of Northborough and town of Southborough for the educational system, so we're very grateful for that. So that was a success, and the end result of a lot of hard work from the leadership team and the finance team in putting that budget together and the school committee. So I just want to thank the school committee for the efforts, the finance team and the central office, and Principal Bevan and his team, and also the citizens of Northborough. Also, at the town meeting, the town of Northborough did support the indebtedness of the athletic complex, so that was the second approval that we needed to move forward, so we're very excited about moving the athletic complex project to fruition, and we have approval from both communities, and again, very strong support from the citizens of Northborough. And now our responsibility is to bring that project to fruition on budget and hopefully on time. So overall, very successful town meeting from a school district, from a school budget perspective.
I'd just like to, you know, say congratulations to the superintendent for his leadership, specifically for the budget, but also mostly for the complex and, and for the boosters club and Paul and the people who put in so, so much time over many years, but really in the last two years to organize, marshal the resources, get everything together so that it could start if it was approved, and to inform the community, the community support was tremendous, but also I think that goes to the advocacy and showing the details and being transparent about what the project was, how much it was, and the benefit to the students. So it was a, I know, you and Keith and so many other people put a lot of work into that, and really need to be congratulated, that was amazing.
Yeah, I'd like to, I think, you know, the chairing of the committee is Paul, Chris Covino, Sir Tom McMiss, you know, Keith La Boy, and John Bevan, Mike Moserino, and the project committee, so there's a lot of, there's a team effort behind the scene.
The boosters, like sort of pushed this a couple of years ago.
Exactly. So I think it's a great example of when you have a lot of comedic talent and people come together, great things can happen.
I could just chime in on that. All that's true, but Greg, I think, don't set yourself short, because it was you who had the vision to actually pursue this path, and we, as you mentioned, it's been going better. It's been talked about for, I don't know how many years, seven, eight years, or more. But if I'm not mistaken, it was you who sort of recognized, there's only one way we're gonna get this done, and that's through the capital program, it's gonna have to pass both town meetings, and you were right, and both town meetings approved it resolutely. So thank you for your leadership. So, thank you for your leadership.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next, uh, discussion of school committee agenda and packet distributions.
So just a, a quick discussion. It was recommended at the last combined meeting by, um, throughout the sharing by citizen that the school committee, um, release its entire packet, um, the same, um, day that the agenda is released. So I have had conversations with Cheryl about the feasibility of doing that and the pros and cons. My recommendation is to release the entire packet on Friday, um, when the agenda is released. Everything that we publish is, um, public knowledge, public information. I think it provides citizens an opportunity to review the packet and be prepared to come to, um, audience sharing or public comment with their questions. The only disadvantage that I can see is that it doesn't provide the committee time to review the packet before the entire packet is released. That, I believe, can be managed by, by you folks by just saying, you know, I'll get back to you. So my recommendation, Cheryl, with Cheryl's support, strong support. Is that, um, the agenda and the entire school committee packet be released, um, on Friday in key given system. The community, Northborough and Southborough already voted to do that, so it's just going to have a third, third committee to have that process.
So we may get more like parents showing up, yeah, which is what we're doing.
And it's truly full of transparency. There's nothing in the packet that.
There's nothing really in a packet that's not, you know. If they shouldn't have to tell that.
It's very exciting reading. I'm, I think we should be happy to share that with anybody who's read it for that.
Exhibit A.
Actually, the things that are most exciting usually are the various presentations we have, which are not always in the packet. So I, I don't know if this is kind of put pressure that's probably warranted on, on folks to get their presentations done in time to be included in that.
Yeah, I think we're trying to do a better job of having all the presentations in the packet so that you have a chance, as committee members, to review the presentation and prepare your questions as well. So we haven't always, um, had all the presentations ready. But I think we're making a better effort with working through Sean's office, the department chairs. And actually, it's easier when you get all the information in on before Friday because then you're not worrying about scrambling to prepare.
It's consistent from all the other districts down. Other questions or comments? So we need a motion?
No vote. I'll just let Cheryl know.
Okay.
Changing the process.
Okay. Review with a handbook. I think that's what this whole packet is.
Speaking of exciting reading. So not, no, nothing, no major changes to the handbook this year. It was a lot of housekeeping stuff. One of the recommendations from the committee last year was to add page numbers and so forth and make it a little bit more user-friendly. So all the summer, we went through that and, uh, and did, did that to the best of our ability. We included in it now links to district policies, like a bullying policy, some of the other policies that are district-wide. We made it a little more applicable to just click on that. And the policies are still in there, but they have a link to the full district policy website, too. Over the summer, we worked with legal counsel to go through, uh, our discipline section of it. There were a few updates there. There have been a few other updates as this year has gone on. So the handbook right now is still with legal counsel to get their final blessing on it. We made a few updates to areas like parking and tardies and that kind of thing that were minor, but really more or less to reflect the current practice a bit more than, um, more than anything. And over time, the handbook, a lot of this housekeeping, housekeeping stuff this summer was done in this year, has been kind of trimming some of the excess off of it. We found that the handbook was probably a culmination of years of just adding stuff. And so we went through it, uh, this year and started trimming that up. To give you kind of example, twenty-nineteenth handbook was over eighty pages. We're down to sixty-something pages now. So, um, and a lot of that was things that were repeated throughout the handbook that were listed in one section and listed again in the second section. So moving forward, we're looking at our attendance policy, which is a big part of the handbook, that, um, we're going to be working with staff and then probably a committee next year, our, uh, student dress code and so forth, to, um, get some student input on that and, and staff and so forth and some community members as well. So that's handbook update, questions or anything?
I do have a question. I did leave the handbook. And, um, I just have actually, I, it was more of a question about the Alice drills, and it's not so much what's in the handbook, but I guess since I've been on the committee and I know that the pandemic has kind of skewed things, but what is the policy for having drills? Not necessarily for the teachers, because they're probably getting it as part of PD and things, but for students.
So we tried to do three drills a year with one, the first one being something like a tabletop, the second one being, uh, more of a, um, kind of active drill, the third one being, uh, unannounced and even more active. So more essentially like a fire drill where students don't know what's coming and.
Yeah, and I do know we do get information from Mr. Bevan when that happens. So I just, I just wanted to know, like, about how often.
Yeah, we, we designed, uh, sorry, Andy did an excellent job. I'll just add, this was by design to spiral the, kind of the instruction almost in effect by making the first drill feel informative, but not raise students anxiety. And then the next one gets them more accustomed to the actual, what it would look and feel like to be in an actual Alice event. And the third one would be in a more, potentially in an unstructured, maybe during passing time or during lunch. So, and then we start over in the, in the, in the fall. So that was by design. So we do three a year. We have another one coming up soon.
Okay, great, thanks.
I'll just add to, um, pre-K through eight, we also conduct Alice drills. By the time our freshmen arrive, they've already participated in twenty-one Alice drills over their educational careers.
Okay.
You know, it is part of our institutional process that we have, um, that continues at times.
No, just lastly, add, uh, we use them also internally to test our own systems. So I think the last Alice drill we did, I sent out the communication you referred to on my phone through the Parents Per app, which I'd never done before. So that's my working on the things. And I might not be apparent from what you see, but that's us testing our, our systems that are also kind of invisible systems.
Okay, great, thanks. I just want to also continue to commend you on the homework policy. So I think it's awesome. And like, especially over breaks, the kids are actually getting breaks, and it's really refreshing to see. So thank you. And then the last comment I had was about unexcused absences or tardiness, tardiness. And I guess the language right here, I feel, is maybe not the best, and maybe that's, I hope we work on this next year, which is, it says, "No opportunity to obtain credit for work in a student unexcused absence from class or unexcused tardiness to class to be provided," and then you get zeros. And I mean, if a kid, I can't imagine the kids who wake up sick and don't get to go to the doctor, don't get a chance to make up a test. I'm sure they do, right? But it's not expressed here, and.
Yeah, that's part of, like, just work with the whole attendance piece because the makeup work policy is tied into that, too.
Right.
And there's a lot of things tied into that. It's been ongoing conversation here that it's like, it's come to time to address, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's used on something that is a real, kind of, um, an area that we need to address and work on. So the, the language you're describing is not being used to really penalize, it's in the way that I think the language should suggest because it is overly punitive and
Right.
so.
Paul?
Just have one question or comment. Maybe this is addressed, you mentioned that the policies are going to be linked to the live policies. I guess I noticed the J three forty on concussions, that's been updated recently to require impact testing. I think we got the old version of that. And I think the requirement for impact testing is definitely worth including. I'm sure everyone will read it.
So in terms of the approval of the handbook, so typically, um, the process is we'll share the updates, listen to feedback, make changes, then bring the handbook out at the next meeting for a vote. So some of these smaller changes could be.
Yeah, it sounded like legal counsel's still advising. People wouldn't want to vote before. Right, okay. Okay, so that will be on our next agenda. All right, that brings us to the superintendent's report.
So we'll turn it over to Principal Bevan for the principal's report.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you, Keith. Wonderful, thank you, Keith. Good evening, everyone. It gives me pleasure to deliver my principal's report, um, for this month, April. And I'm going to first start with, uh, with Ben, and then his report is incorporated into mine, so we're going to start there. And then I will, I can look fancy like, but I.
Good evening, everyone. So the first part of the presentation, before I go to kind of my normal monthly updates, is a little bit more specific into how student governance works at Algonquin. Through work between the Student Advisory Committee and Ms. Key and Ms. Palczko, it became clear that there are a lot of questions, and I think the student body also has a lot of questions about it because it's quite complicated, actually. So I wanted to provide a breakdown, very surface level, to all of you. So first, kind of, the Algonquin Student Government Association, um, is comprised of the Student Council, which is kind of the highest body, um, and then the Student Advisory Committee and four steering committees, one for each grade. And then all Student Government Association rules are set by the Student Government Association Constitution and Student Council resolutions. So the constitution is a very permanent document that we make, we try to limit the number of changes to, and resolutions are a little bit more informal, um, and kind of expire at the end of each year. So each year, the Student Council kind of opens the year with a set of resolutions to establish norms for the year. I have copies of the constitution for your reference. If I'm allowed to pass them up. Just want to pass them down maybe. So just so you guys can see these, um, it was recently amended earlier this month, so this is the most up-to-date version. Kind of, while those are going around. So the role of government and membership of each organization, so the Student Council, like I said, is the highest body. It's comprised of students from all four grades. It plans the major whole-school events, that's pep rally, winter ball, and carnival. It has a bigger focus on school policy and improving student life. And the Student Council has a policy committee, um, which is, um, kind of focused on a lot of the kind of improving student life aspects as opposed to like the events committee. And the Student Council has twenty-four members. Each class's president serves on the Student Council, along with five elected representatives from each class. The Student Advisory Committee, um, is responsible for representing the interests of the Student Government Association and student body before the regional school committee. And it's comprised of five elected students who are elected, um, by the entire student body. And then the steering committees are comprised of any interested members of a class. They plan class events, so their prom, um, and some whole-school events, so the juniors host homecoming each year. And there's a big focus on fundraising and morale building. And the steering committee is much more focused on just what's going on for that grade. So the leadership of each organization, um, so the Student Council has three officers who are elected internally. The president is responsible for coordinating all Student Council operations, representing the views and priorities of the Student Council and student body before school administration. The secretary maintains records of the Student Council's operations and assists the president as needed. And the treasurer maintains records of all Student Council deposits and withdrawals and helps the president. And then we use subcommittees to delegate work. So each subcommittee is led by a chairperson. This year, we have four subcommittees. It's events, service, transparency, and openness, which is responsible for our social media and publishing minutes. And policy, events, service, policy transparency, and openness. And the Student Council is advised by Mr. Berry. The Student Advisory Committee is led by a chairperson who's elected internally and is advised by Mr. Berry. The chairperson is the one, is me, is responsible for serving as an ex officio member of the regional school committee. And then the steering committees are led by a number of officers who are elected by their class. So they have a president, a vice president, a secretary, a treasurer, and five representatives to the Student Council, and other leaders as deemed necessary by the committee. So each, so some grades have chosen to create an officer position as like a social media manager or a prom manager. So those are additional officer roles that exist. And each class is, has two advisors, kind of help run the steering committee and provide a lot of guidance for the class as a whole. So elections, so the Student Council officers are elected internally within the first three weeks of the start of the school year. The Student Advisory Committee has a whole student body vote in May with multiple weeks of campaigning. No in-person opportunity to speak before the student body, but we do like allow for like publishing candidate statements. And I think this year, we're probably going to also do candidate videos so they can like record like a short video speech that we'll publish. And then the chairperson is elected internally by June first. That is a deadline set by Mass General Law. Steering committees have, um, the president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, and three of the class representatives are elected by their class in late June. And they follow the conversation with the candidates procedure. So this is like a parred-down debate. It's moderated by the harbinger. They ask each candidate questions, the candidates respond, um, and that's in front of the whole class. Last year was the first time we did it. It went pretty well. There were a lot of like kind of little pinks for the first year. So we've adjusted the policies and the procedures for that. So hopefully it'll go a little better this year, a little more uniform. And then two additional representatives to the Student Council are elected in September by the steering committee. So that's kind of always been an aspect that three Student Council representatives are elected by the student body as a whole, and then two more are elected within the steering committee. And that's really been put in place to kind of alleviate the like popularity contest aspect of student government. So like a lot of times, student government elections tend to just be a popularity contest. And by creating those two additional representatives, um, elected by a smaller group who's more really into like the mining details of what student government is doing, it tends to just create a little more seriousness for that individual race. And it also allows for people who may have been running for president or vice president in the fall to run again in the spring, sorry, who ran in the spring to run again in the fall, um, to give their shot at representation. So before I go into kind of the monthly part, any questions on that? I know it was a lot, not that much time, but, if I can clarify anything. Yeah?
Uh, just a question. Where does the constitution, uh, where is it accessible online?
So it's on the school website as under student life. So the Student Government Association constitution is linked there. And the entire student body has access to it through the Student Council's Canvas page, which is like a one-stop shop for everything the Student Council does. We also tend to leave a couple copies in each school office, although no student has ever picked one up from there. And Mr. Berry, the Student Council advisor, has copies in his room for any interested students. Anything else with that? Yeah?
A question about the Student Council election, is in the first three weeks of school.
Yeah.
I would think that'd be a little tough for freshmen who don't know each other yet.
So by that point, the freshmen are not on the Student Council typically. So the. So the freshmen elect their president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, and reps later in the fall, typically by the end of September. But oftentimes, the freshmen don't have their representatives elected in time for the Student Council's internal election for officers. It's unfortunate, but it's kind of inevitable, but the Student Council needs leadership early enough in the year that we can't really, and we can't have the freshmen have their election super early in the year, because we do want them to have time to meet each other, campaign, adjust to high school a little bit. That's just, yeah. Anything else? Alright. So kind of, oh. Is my second half?
So I jump off.
Alright, if you go to your email, I think I just reset it.
Excuse me. Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
Alright, so what's on student minds? So last month, we did a survey, or earlier this month, on Wi-Fi. So we asked students, looking back on the past week, which of the following describes your experience with the wireless internet? And over the past few weeks, starting from the return of February vacation, my Wi-Fi experience has been blank compared to the first half of the school year. So for that first question, you can see that there's still a number of students who feel that the Wi-Fi is somewhat too very unreliable, a pretty big majority. Ten percent still are saying that they have little or no access to the internet, and only about 20% are saying that they have no issues or that it's generally reliable. I was honestly surprised when I saw that data, because anecdotally, I had thought that stuff had been improved recent, had been much more improved. But this is, it's a survey of 122, so about 10% of the student body responded. And then similarly, these results were worse than I thought they were anecdotally. About, you know, like 35% saying the internet has been improved since returning from February vacation, about 30% saying it's about the same, and about 30% saying it's been much worse. Again, anecdotally, it's felt much better, but this is what students are reporting in terms of the data.
How did the survey get sent to them?
So we sent it by email to the whole school, twice, and they had four days to submit it. So we just sent it as an email to the whole student body, said, "Dear students, please see the below survey, I take a moment to fill it out." That's how we send out most surveys, and this is a pretty typical response rate, including like harbinger surveys typically get only this amount, too. The only survey I've ever gotten a lot more than this responses of is I got 700 responses on a survey for winter ball regarding like the menu items. So it's clear that people see them and kind of act on them based on how much information they have, and I think there's probably some degree of bias of students who feel that the Wi-Fi is worse for them, might be more likely to respond negatively than students who are kind of just like content and maybe sick of thinking about it. But to each their own for the interpretation. In terms of school news, earlier this month, the senior class did a trip to the Red Sox game, so 180 seniors went to Fenway Park to see a pretty crummy game. But it was a really fun event. We filled up four big school buses and went off to Boston, and it went very well, there were no major issues. Spring sports have been off to a pretty good start. Most of the teams are doing pretty well, and everyone's excited to be back outside. The robotics team, like Mr. Bevan talked about, surprisingly ended up at a national competition and did very well. Our music department got a large number of awards at their MICA festivals earlier this month and at the end of March. The AP art classes went on a pretty neat field trip, I think to Worcester, to some art museums, and the students who did that said that they really enjoyed it. And then the week before break, a bunch of the peer leaders from the ADL program went to a youth congress in Boston, and I heard from a number of people as well that it was a great experience. Some student government initiatives, so we passed the election improvements, along with some other amendments to the Constitution. So what you have that I passed out earlier is the most up-to-date Constitution. We, again, improved the election process, and then we aligned a lot of the policies across all the different kind of groups within the Student Government Association. So in the past, each group had like a separate impeachment proceeding, a separate process for one thing, another process for another thing, and we tried to align them more, just so that there's less confusion about how it all works, because a lot of people were, including advisors, were confused, and we all, we kept having to go back to the Constitution and figuring out very minute details depending on the circumstances, and we tried to make it clearer. We're also running our annual food drive. This is the biggest food drive Elgonquin has each year. In the past, we've had to rent U-Haul trucks to get all the food to the pantries, so we're running this until the end of May, mid-May, so we're looking forward to that. And then the Student Council did a donation protocol, not protocol, donation drive to support clubs. So we started this like network of Elgonquin clubs to really unite Elgonquin club leaders and give them an opportunity to kind of work together and collaborate, and kind of as a Kickstarter event, and to get people like in the door to attend, we ran this donation thing. And we ended up awarding three $100 donations to some clubs. So the Adams Club, we gave them funds to help with the expenses of running a program to bring STEM projects to younger students in the district. The Girl Up Club was given funds to help in hosting a peer mentorship program for young girls to become strong leaders. And the Community Action Program was given funds to help with the community-wide birthday cleanup and a food pantry collection. And the way that those grants were awarded is they all submitted a pretty in-depth application, explaining exactly how they used the funds. We asked for prior service history, but we didn't consider it. We wanted clubs who were new but had like still good ideas to be able to be eligible for the funds. And then a committee consisting of myself, the Student Council's treasurer, Shannon Kearney, who's the Student Council's head of transparency and openness, that kind of was running this effort, Mr. Barry, Mr. Bevan, and Ms. Moulton, who's the Student Activities Director, did like a ranked choice vote on each of the applications, and then the three highest ranking ones received the funds. And it's my understanding that that money was transferred into this club's accounts the day before break and has been already used for some great things, especially with the Adams Club. Is that it? I think that's it. Yeah.
Questions?
Just had a small question. In the photographs of school news, the robotics team in the background has the Tomahawk, so I'm just wondering...
It's very old. It's a very old picture.
Oh, I see.
It is an old picture. I think they probably do still have that, and it's a, it's an old robot that that's on. It's actually, I didn't notice that when I was putting it together, but that's actually one of the very, very few places you might see it still at school, but I think it's on an older robot, in the same way that it's still on some of like the old banners and plaques, that it's like a recognition still of the success they had at that time. But, yeah.
And I see it in the community for softball, and I'm just curious as to, is it a statement to continue it or not?
I don't think it's a statement. I think it's like with the uniforms, it's like a long and expensive process to replace it everywhere it exists, and I think maybe speak to kind of...
Yeah, increasingly, we just see, or decreasingly, we do see the Tomahawk there. For sure, it will be around in our building, in lots of different places for many years, and that was something we discussed at length. At this last weekend, this Sunday, we had our Hall of Fame induction ceremony for athletics Hall of Fame, inducted several individuals in a basketball team. At the end of that event, the Hall of Fame Committee President presented a plaque that retired the Tomahawk ceremonially at that event, and that will hang in the space on the hall, on the actual Hall of Fame wall, and demarcate a break between when we stopped using plaques that had that image anymore, and started using plaques that have that image.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a question, sorry. Ben, I, you know, certainly the internet Wi-Fi seems to be a repeated concern for students. I just, I'm just gonna try to seek a little bit of clarity on that, and so if you have to gather more information, that's totally fine. One of my questions is, is that computers are being dropped from the Wi-Fi? Is that the issue? In other words, students will be on the Wi-Fi network and all of a sudden their connection is gone? Or is it a matter of accessing the internet and the content that the students are trying to access is just inaccessible?
I think part of the issue of the whole year is it's been so many different kind of little issues that it's been hard to pinpoint and describe exactly. I think at the start of the year, a lot of the issues were with getting online and getting connected in the first place, and then the dropping. I think now, we're still seeing like really slow speeds. We've also seen though, like, most of my teachers have just stopped using a lot of online stuff. They've started just like printing out readings and tried to stay away from digital stuff as much as possible, just because the reliability isn't great. Like, slide shows are taking a long time to load, and Google Slides, Canvas is taking a long time to load. But I think part of the issue is that it's not exactly like one major issue, but a lot of like different struggles regarding different steps of the Wi-Fi.
So I'm gonna share a little bit of my experience at the school I work at, because we also have Wi-Fi, and the school that I work at is about half the size of Elgonquin, it's actually just about half the size of Elgonquin. And one of the things that we tend to run into is, we do run into internet issues like this fairly frequently, and a lot of it depends on, and again, I can't speak for the network here, but a lot of it has to do with what stu, what, not just students, but what everybody is accessing at a given time, and essentially, you know, what the speed of the main connection to the building is, because I've asked my tech director about this in the past. And this tends to be fairly common, especially like, for example, during the computer administration of the MCAS, all of a sudden, the internet is, has vanished effectively for everybody else. And I think part of it, and again, I don't want to speak out of turn here, but I think part of it is, you know, we live in a society where we're consuming a lot of high bandwidth content, and, you know, speaking for myself, when I go to access something like a Google Doc or a Google Slide, I have no trouble accessing that at the school I work at, but when I go to load up a YouTube video, or I try to access something like that, it tends to be much, much slower in terms of accessibility. And I think it likely has something to do, and again, I don't want to speak out of turn, with, there's a bandwidth issue. You essentially have 1,500 people trying to access a limited or finite amount of bandwidth in the building. And I just want you to know that, you know, we are aware of that, and we're not ignoring, ignoring the concerns, and that there are certainly things that are going on behind the scenes in an effort to try to mitigate some of the concerns that are happening there. But so I just wanted to kind of throw that out there.
So I can add just a couple of comments. So there definitely have been challenges this year that our educators and students have experienced. Immediately following February break, we didn't have a third-party company come in and evaluate our Wi-Fi configuration. There were significant changes that that third-party company made to configurations. And as a result, we are seeing improved connections. The overall system is working better, although not perfect. So we have invested in the resources to make sure it works. I want to be clear that it's not a matter of we haven't invested enough in our technology. What we have struggled with is investing in the technical expertise to manage the technology. So we've had some turnover in our technology department at the district level, which configures and operates all of the backend equipment. We have been very fortunate to hire a highly skilled network, district network technician, Jim McKendy, who began immediately after February break, and we saw immediate positive outcomes as a result of his onboarding. More work needs to be done, but I just want to make it clear to the committee that it's not because we don't have the financial resources or the educational tools for students, it's, we didn't have the correct technical expertise at the time. We do now. And then I'll just also add that we have had very successful MCAS administrations where we've had 300 students take the MCAS with no issues. And that's one example of the improvements, as a result of some expertise that we've brought in. Some of the fixes that will need to take place will be over the summer, and those are lined up with Ryan, and we are already working in partnership with Keith and Boyd.
In addition to, every student will be getting a uniform and Chromebook.
Correct.
So it will be a variety of devices. What are the variety of issues?
We're doubling our bandwidth next year at the high school, to your point, Chris. We are investing in one-to-one devices purchased by the high school, starting with freshmen. So we are taking the right steps, but to Ben's point, there isn't one switch where we can turn on and have everything resolved immediately. And the last thing I'll say is, we also, once again, had strong community support from our parents. We had one parent who has expertise in the technology sector, who volunteered his time to help us kind of work through some of these issues. So that person has been on our team and has been part of some of the improvements that we've seen over the past few weeks. I think one of the challenges is now is that we need to reset confidence. So when you give out a behavior survey around, is it reliable or not? I think that there are some past experiences that are, are going to be, it's gonna, going to take some time to shield from those experiences, so we get better data and better results from surveys, such as the one that Ben shared today.
Yeah, and maybe I can respond to that, because I, like Ben, have come to observe stronger performance recently than has been the case all year, and so that, that data is a little bit surprising, but that's the experience of the 122 students who shared that experience, and I don't dispute that, it just is a little bit surprising to me. And we have, just today, our technician on site sent a survey to staff, and that mirrors some of the questions we were asking in September, when these questions were really, became such an issue early on, and now, I think the adults who are gonna be completing that, that will really provide a real delta analysis between where we were in September, October, we think we're really in bad shape, and where we are now, and we're gonna see what that data provides later this week.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Ben. Great job.
Thank you.
Alright, and we are gonna pick up right here. So I'm gonna be reporting on a few different items today. First is what is called the Career Expo. That is an event that happened a few weeks ago that I helped to plan. We talked about the championship travel between DECA and Robotics. Go pass that pretty quickly, because we've talked about that already. And then a visit from our friends in London, you'll learn all about that. So earlier this year, I began work with Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce. I'm on a committee there called School Business, the Chamber School Business Group. I apologize for a picture of my own self here on this event, but this is, on the right-hand side is Rob...
You're pointing at yourself.
I'm pointing. It's me looking very presidential and like an executive, but this was at this event, and I'll tell you all about, on the left-hand side is Jason Madero, he's the principal at Hudson High School, and on the right-hand side is Rob Spector, who is the representative from the Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce. And we've worked, my sense is this group has worked for years on just trying to make connections between the schools and the regional industries. And this year, we really decided to tackle it with an event that would achieve each of these two goals. The one was to provide students with an opportunity to learn about an alternative or parallel path to four-year colleges. And the other is to provide industry representatives with an opportunity to inform students about industries in the region. And so what that looked like was along with the other high schools up here, on March 30th, we convened at Apex Entertainment in Marlboro, who gave us a very much reduced rate on the space and had five different learning opportunities in different industry areas so that students from all of these different high schools could convene to learn about the opportunities that exist for those students as either short-term careers or long-term careers by the people who are in those areas now. So the target audience for this work is, for a lot of our students and a lot of students in these area schools, are students who might not be planning on attending a four-year college, but want to know, they are eager to enter the workforce into a career that they're, they will find gratifying and exciting and enjoyable. And on the other side, as we all know, the industries are really eager to attract talented, young, well-educated, young people to fill positions that they're having a hard time filling. So this is not a job fair and if it's not a job fair, it was really more of an opportunity for students in 25-minute segments to go and meet with representatives and hear about the different areas of expertise and I'll tell you what those segments are. We had 130 attendees. I was the chair of the, of the planning group that put this together. And for the first time ever, you know, a first time ever event, we felt like it was a success. We're excited to build on that success for next year. We only had four Algonquin students attend this year. I was aiming for closer to 20-plus. And I think now that we know what it was like and it got good results, we can put feedback in from students and we're eager to pull it off for next year with greater enrollment from our schools. I'm confident we're going to get a much higher number with all those other schools combined. And to just give you an idea of some of the other people who were investing their time and energy in this, of the five area segments and the rooms where those were happening, four of them were run by high school principals. So I ran the one on banking, Mr. Maderos ran one, Mr. Callahan, who is the principal at Westboro High School and also an Algonquin parent, he ran one, and Mr. Norwalki, who's the principal at AMSA, ran another segment. So that was really the kind of the level of investment we saw here, which is exciting. Let's just give you a sense for how we were promoting this event. We created, you know, flyers, started communicating with our communities, but we also wanted to make sure we were not missing, missing segments of our school environment and so we had the flyers translated into languages for the young people who will be entering the workforce, who might not be going to four-year colleges. And that was an attempt to get as many kids involved and excited as possible. So what it looked like was this, and this is really the last slide, but we had five industry, industry areas represented and you can see them there. Those were hospitality, manufacturing, banking, the municipal sector and healthcare. And we had representatives from each of those areas on the right-hand side who would come and they would do the, most typical presentation was a roughly 10-minute overview of what it takes and what they love about banking and how they got into it, about their trajectory as a banking professional was. And then they opened up questions and then students were able to come and meet with them at the end of each segment. Each student had ID card with a QR code linked to their email address and so they could trade their email address with that professional if they wanted to learn more. So the goal of this was for students to get excited and understand about all these really wonderful regional industries, these industries in our region that are looking for young people and maybe to look at some summer internship opportunities or maybe to go straight from this event or the end of their high school career and into a training program at Main Street Bank perhaps. And so we got a lot of good feedback from students and we have, you know, we left this event with a lot of inertia with the goal of planning another one for next year. I think for us here at the high school, I think we have not had a strong track record of educating our students on career opportunities coming out of high school for students who are not on the four-year college track. And this is an attempt to start to shore up some of that, some of those weaknesses by establishing something we're going to do perennially in partnership with the Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce. Additionally, I anticipate, or my goal is that, first off, all the hard heavy lifting that was like one-time work will be easily replicable for next year. And my goal is that when we fill the career council position that we've been discussing, that this person would really take the leadership role in tackling this and bringing this back, back for us all and for our students and move forward on it. So we're really excited it was, it was successful. What you see here on this photograph, that those are municipal professionals from Marlboro talking to students about their work. And we had different sessions all around Apex where students had that experience, just like you see on that photograph. We talked a little bit about the, these two travel events that we had, so I won't, I won't belabor it, but we were very excited for these students and proud of them. The DECA, our wonderful DECA program went to Orlando, Florida to participate in the International Career Development Conference, or what we call, what they call ICDC. We had 28 students participate. They arrived midday today from that event, from, you know, the airport and they were one of 20,000 or more DECA students. We had several do quite well, two groups in fact, as I understand, made it to the top 10. Those were Eric Sun, Sindhu Virmanan Menini, Sophia Lu Deluna and Ali O'Hearn earned a silver medal for her presentation. So not a surprise that our students do well. We have one of the strongest DECA programs in the state of Massachusetts and so we're very excited about that and proud of them. And then we talked about, and Ben had shared about, our first robotics team went to, he's in Texas, to compete with 36,000 others in this really wonderful event and they are back state of the game as well. I don't have details on how they did. I know they performed well. I don't know where they placed. And then finally, by the next time we see each other, I'll, I think, with the calendar, but on May 25th and 26th, we are hosting here at the high school, 24 students from Lister Community School, which is a school in East London. And they come to us by way of a resident community member in South Row whose cousin works at the school and linked us together. They have a grant from the UK government to come and visit the states and learn more about US education, specifically about mathematics education. So they're going to spend two days in our school focusing heavily on what does math education look like here at Algonquin, but also they're excited about all the other things about American high school. And especially, we were on a call with them this morning where we got to meet our post-students, got to meet at 7:30 this morning on a Zoom call with their students to hear questions and trade ideas and we are linking them together. So between now and the 25th and 26th, the students will get back together in pairs to get to know each other so that when they arrive here, they know each other and they're interested in things. And then they'll have a lot of the social benefits of being here at high school too. They want to see what American high school fashion looks like. They wear a uniform that they don't really like, they told me. And they want to experience American extracurricular activities. They're very excited about one thing. Did I tell you all about this? They're very excited about one thing, to write on an American school list, which they think is a very, it's like the most prototypical.
Well, we like their double deckers, so this was.
I told them that, yeah. So, and then at the end of the second day, which is Friday, we will shuttle them over to Apex and our students and their students will bowl and do all kinds of other things. So these are freshmen and sophomores and their equivalent of freshmen and sophomores. This is a, a school in, in East London that is, I think it's an underprivileged community and so we are really looking forward to making some strong connections with this school. And they keep telling us that we're welcome to come over to them next year or some year in the future. And I think that would be a nice thing to think about someday. So we're excited about that and I will be sharing with you how that looks.
How are they going to cope with math being singular here?
Instead of maps?
Maps, they don't talk about, it's not good at math.
Oh, you know, yeah.
It's like a verification.
We'll see, we'll see how it goes. We're, we're excited about it. We have, just to give you a sense for some of the enthusiasm around it here from our students, we put it out to our freshmen and sophomores to see how many kids would be interested in hosting. And this is not hosting that requires a home visit. It's just hosting for the day. They will be staying in Boston and coming back, coming in here and going back to Boston and coming back. We had 100 students of ours eager to speak in this program and we had to really just, it allowed us to pair them a little bit more, I think, compatibly so that these are good pairings and their interests are aligned. So we're really excited about that and I'll report back on the event as it goes.
I really thought you were going to say they were excited about the cookies.
We told them we have good cookies, so yeah, we will, we will be. No, no.
They're so excited for the muscles, right?
They're so excited about the muscles, yeah. They asked me like.
Keith, where are you?
So we, we will put them on.
That's not easy.
Will they leave with the same excitement?
Exactly.
We'll find out.
So we will put them on a bus and on a yellow school bus and send them to Apex.
What we should do is hire a coach.
A coach bus, Amelia, with Sally Roll. And that, that concludes my report. If anyone has any questions.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks for your leadership on the Career Expo. It's amazing and I'm so happy to see that and hopefully it'll flourish, more opportunity for our kids. It was great to see that. And I just wanted to see if you guys could share a little bit about that Crock Jibbit project, which I thought was so cool. And just share because I saw it on Instagram.
Of course, yeah, I'm happy to talk about that. Does everybody know what a Crock Jibbit is? All right. Well, crocs are those sandals that I think everybody knows what those are and gibbits are those little adornments that students, or young people, wear on their gibbits. And our social media marketing class developed a project plan to sell Crock gibbits in the Algonquin logos, like the one that Superintendent Marko has, the A and T interlocking and then just the A. And so they designed them, they had them 3D printed here on site. They manufactured them by like kind of assembling them here and then they came up with a whole social media campaign, even the packaging and what the labeling looked like, the pricing, and then they sold them at our school store.
And they had a crop day.
They had a, and then they had a crop, like Wear Your Parts at School Day that was part of that big promotion.
I thought it was great.
Yeah, it was really wonderful. It was a nice, it's a wonderful class. It's Kathy Kirkin's social media marketing class. We're very proud. That worked very, you know, it was a very cool outcome, a real-world, hands-on outcome that is often hard to pull off in high school and they did it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're really proud of them.
I was just in front of robotics placed 33rd in that nation.
Wow, 33rd in that country.
Wow, in the, in the world.
In the world or?
Whatever the competition was.
Wow.
33rd, wow. Remarkable.
World champs.
I'll try and get more exact, you know, exact spell of that name. Yeah, that's really exciting. Maybe we'll bring the robot. Well, thank you, Mr.
I have a question, but a comment or maybe a challenge for you, so. Clearly excited about the complex. It was very clear the team did such a great job at laying out the need and it was probably well overdue, but clearly it took a lot of years for you guys to make the case. So I would challenge you to think about, when I hear about DECA, how good a program that is and now the robotics program, I'd like to hear more, like what new capital projects we can do, whether it's to support those type of clubs or to support the parks. Like are our facilities providing great opportunities for our kids to participate in the things that they want to participate in? And I think, so that's my.
Sure. Keep an eye out for anything that feels like a barrier or students have designs on doing something grand.
Yeah, because clearly it takes time to build the case and the need for what we want, why we want and how it benefits the kids and communities and all of that. So I just have to start thinking about it.
Sure.
Thank you.
That moves us along. All right, so in your package is the enrollment support as of March 28, 2023, so no significant variances. So items three through six on your agenda will be reviewed by Mikey Calgrano.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the monthly general fund report. And this is the report as of March 31st, 2023. As you can see, we had just under $449,000 remaining in the operational budget, or 1.74% of that budget. As you know, I like to compare it to the previous year and last year at this time, we did have $133,000, but we had also encumbered money that we had intended to apply towards E and D at the end of the year. And that's actually some of the conversations that we're having internally about what we'd be looking at to contribute back to E and D for next fiscal year. The other thing that I want to note is we are now closing in on the final months of the fiscal year. Hard to believe. Prior to April vacation, I did send out a memo to all administrators, admin assistants and also the department chairs about some of the key dates that will be coming up over the next few months. The first date that is on the agenda is May 5th. That will be the last date where schools are able to enter purchase orders into the system for fiscal year. Obviously, if there are urgent or emergency type situations, we will be able to do that. But we really do like to kind of slow down the spending while we close things out so that we can pay the bills that are outstanding or make sure that we get in all of the items that are ordered prior to the fiscal year. So that's really where we stand right now with the fiscal year 23 budget.
Questions on that?
I would, I actually do have a question. Do you happen to know off the top of your head how much we contributed to OPEP, the OPEP trust this year?
We do have $25,000 that was budgeted and we will be making that contribution in the next couple of months.
So my question would be, if we're looking at determining how much we're going to place into E and D for next year, I don't know if it makes any real sense to consider either making a slightly additional contribution to OPEP, OPEP, or actually, I don't know what the alternative would be, just all going into E and D. I don't know if it shows, I don't know if it shows a good faith effort, knowing that we do have a little bit of excess to add a little bit more to the, the OPEP account.
I think some of the variables that we'd be looking at is really what we're looking at in terms of the, the school committee policy and where we fall within that 3.25 to, you know, or sorry, 2.25 to 2.75 range. And then we can have those conversations because I do agree that we do need to look at the OPEP.
So just a general comment too, we can have that conversation at any point in time. So we can let the fiscal year 23 close out, open up the fiscal year 24 and then have a conversation around, do we want to contribute any of that money to OPEP? So there is time for that.
So we need a vote to accept that it's all audited?
I move.
All?
Second.
I move. All in favor? Your names.
So the next item is the revenue report. March was actually a fairly quiet month as far as revenue reports are concerned. We did receive South Row's March 1st assessment payment. We are also seeing an increase in the athletic fees and that is due to the fact that the spring sports season has risen full spring, full swing now, but it was just beginning in March. We've also made two revisions to some of our estimates and that, the first one is for our charter school tuition. You can see that we did increase that and that is based on the projections that have been given to us by the state. And then also for our investment income, we are continuing to see higher than anticipated interest and that is due to the changing interest rates right now thanks to the Fed. So really not much to report in terms of revenue for March.
Questions on that? A, a vote to accept and tell audit it?
So I'm open.
Chris?
Second.
Someone on the side, Kathleen. All in favor? And then there's a request to vote something here.
And I may ask Prashant to weigh in on this as well, but we were approached by Mrs. Johnston to transfer funds from a. But we were approached by Mrs. Johnston to transfer funds from a club that is no longer active within the district, and that was the Girls Learning International. And to have the funds that were allocated to that fund transferred to another club, Operation Enduring Freedom. The Girls Learning International has not been active since twenty sixteen. And so it is her request that, I think it's three thousand dollars and seventy-five cents be transferred from that club to the other. And it is under the school committee's purview that they approve any transfers from one club to another.
I just want, how does, club, that's student activity fees? How does that, I mean, that came from fundraising, so it went specifically to that? That, that's not-
It can be fundraising, it can be a variety of different ways, donations, things.
So I guess that brings to question, like, how many clubs have money? You probably don't have this answer. I'm, I'm wondering if there are other clubs seeing like dormant funds and how we would know that.
The accounting is done at the, I know Diana Jeezy does that accounting.
Yeah, I think it's unusual that we would have an account, an account, a very healthy one, and then the club, you know, not continue. So this is a bit of an unusual combination of a club that has a lot of money in their account and then the club not continuing, so this is, I don't anticipate this would happen a lot. I, I do think there probably are some defunct clubs that have very low dollar amounts, like, you know, that this could come up somewhere along the line, but I think it's this dollar amount being in the multi-thousands that makes this a little bit unusual.
And we are going to be doing, because I like all this, in audit of the student activity account, this coming summer.
I have a question. So it's obviously a lot, and I feel like the money that was fundraised by Girls Learning International was, and then that funds then going to Operation Enduring Freedom are two clubs with like very different goals. Whereas we have like the Girl Up Club, which just from like thirty seconds of research into Girls Learning International, has a very similar goal. I wonder if it would make more sense for the funds to transfer to a club with the similar goal or open it up for clubs to somehow apply for those extra funds? I feel like, obviously, Ms. Johnston was the advisor of both, and that's kind of the link that's driving this transfer, but I feel like there are other clubs that could, I don't know if deserving is the right word, but like those funds were donated to the Girls Learning International Club with an express purpose of supporting like the education of females. And Operation Enduring Freedom has to do with supporting like veterans and stuff, and I feel like-
So I, I think that's a very good point, Ben, and I considered this. I think it might be sensible. I, I would be in support of transferring it to Operation Enduring Freedom in some way, but with the caveat that they work and to make sure that the funds are used in some way that is in the spirit in which they were, they were raised. Perhaps maybe they partner with, with one of those other clubs. So I want to honor the fact that Ms. Johnston worked hard through this. But I do agree that they were probably raised well before my time, and anybody else here, many of them. Perhaps a mission that might not be the same as Operation Enduring Freedom. I don't think this is a pressing issue. I can ask Ms. Johnston to, to consider that and come back with a potential partnership or, or, you know, maybe she's just as happy to transfer them over to another club that whose mission is a little bit more closely aligned with what that previous club was.
Paul? I can take a guess, but could we get a description of what Operation Enduring Freedom is all about?
Sure, off the top of my head, I can tell you it's, as Ben said, they work closely with veterans groups and they develop school assemblies and other events to honor veterans and to work closely with veterans charities to raise money for, for veterans. So things that you might have seen in our mailings and other things for Memorial Day Assembly or Veterans Day Assembly, coming up at the end of, for Memorial Day, they are doing a fundraiser, workout with CrossFit Gym to raise money, again, I think it's a fundraiser, doing a workout with the CrossFit Gym and it's in the theme of veterans, veterans charities.
Their website says that they're a school club that supports military personnel, veterans, and our first responders through assemblies, volunteering activities, and raising awareness of issues affecting our country's heroes.
And then, I thought I just heard that we don't necessarily know how the money got into the Girls Learning International Club in the first place? I mean, do we, was it necessarily fundraising?
We can go and look through the records. I would assume it's fundraising, because that's where the majority of these funds were.
Okay. I guess I would just make the comment, Principal Bevan, I absolutely, I like the idea of going back and asking. Being a club advisor myself, the school I work at, I know that it takes a lot of work on the teacher's part to fundraise for these, but I also recognize the fact that the missions of these two clubs are very distinctly different. So I would, I guess I would ask, and again, it's at the will of the committee, would be to see if the advisor would be willing to split the difference so that a portion of, in recognition of the effort that went into the fundraising on behalf of Ms. Johnston, you know, her work, perhaps splitting it so that half that goes to the club, which I, to the Operation Enduring Freedom Club, and perhaps half going to a club with the closest mission to Girls Learning International, since that was likely the original intent of those funds. That's just a request on, from me.
I think that would be a very sensible way of handling it, and I would trust Ms. Johnson to keep that ready.
Other thoughts without a vote? I guess we'll move that to the lady.
Sure.
Satour for years.
Yes. Ms. Johnson's made it clear, like, however long it takes, you know, whatever, and I'll connect with her about, like, you know, the concepts here that have been explored, which are certainly here.
Can I just ask one question? I saw the balance sheet, which I appreciate, so these accounts, are they on the districts? Are they part of our cash and cash equivalents?
They're under the agency accounts, because really they're, the district does not, they hold them on behalf of the students, it's the students' money, but it's not part of our, our assets.
If that's the case, why are we voting on this?
Because you, you are the overseer of, of the student activity, so you are, let me, what a bang. You're not the thing, but you're the, you're the government, yes. You, you have the ability to authorize the student activity, like you set the parameters for the principal's checking account, like so you have the authority to transfer the funds or approve the transfer of these funds.
Just a final question, not to belabor this point, would be, does this, do all the expenses from the student activity account, which I assume is what it is, does that go through our payroll and warrants? Subcommittee?
No.
It does not?
No, that is, it does go through the warrant, I'm looking at Kathy because you've signed them, but, so what happens is it's actually a separate warrant that Sean and his team put together. It does come up, Greg and I will sign off on it, we review it, but it's all handled here, and then the school committee will sign off on it, and then the funds will be transferred into the, the student activity checking account. So we, we, the high school is actually the one who is like managing this account, and then we're reconciling, our treasurer is reconciling with them to make sure that, you know, things are being handled at that point.
My recommendation would be to have a future presentation on student activities, just in general, the activities that happen at Algonquin Regional High School, kind of the laws and regulations around managing student activities. It's quite detailed and complex, just to give the committee an understanding of this process that is part of our operation.
It's a great tool, isn't it, that playdate this year?
Yes.
Next year, next year.
Yeah, sorry, next, next fall.
Lots of fun rules.
Yes, 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 Ben is very-
Financial reports, number six.
So, and I know Matthew just mentioned that, but what we have included is our financial report. The first report is our combined balance sheet, and that is what is submitted to the Department of Revenue each year. Regional school districts are required to file a combined balance sheet with the DOR, and it is part of our access and deficiency certification process that we go through. And then the remaining supporting reports are those that are published in the district's annual report, just like our, our town report. I will say, you know, the first one, the combined balance sheet really does just give us an overview of the, of our assets, our liabilities, and then also our fund balances. The next report is a statement of the revenue expenditures and then changes in our fund balances. And both of these reports, as I was saying, are very high level. And then the subsequent reports that follow really kind of drill down on that and give you a little bit more information on the different lines that are included in those first two reports. I will say that, you know, a couple of things to point out to you is that you'll see like some negative balances when it comes to the grant reporting. And just wanted to point out that that is as of June thirtieth, and that really is just a, a timing issue. The way that we handle our grant processes, we do at the end of each month have to submit to the state what we have expended in the previous month. And so some of those grants, unfortunately, were showing in the negative. However, I would say probably within the next week after that, the funds would have been received in order to bring those back up to a positive balance. But this is where you'll see, I think it's on the trust and agency reports, Matt, where it does show the agency fund, which is the student activities fund, and that is the balance. And you'll see the, the funds that are going in and out of that account. So it's a lot of information to process, but if anyone has any questions on it as they go through it.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And the other thing that we did spend some time in, when we were doing the financial statements as part of the, that review, is actually, I forget the gentleman's name, but the Scamling Associate, can explain to us how we could see the income statement roll onto the balance sheet, which is just from our cash flow proof, which is nice to see. What is noticeable missing here is it doesn't have the OPEP liability, which is usually your cash and cash.
Oh, yes, yeah, yes, yeah.
And so if we went back to the financial statements, you'll see, and why is a big topic of discussion, the thirty-five million dollar liability, it's not, it's not current, long-term, but it's something solving. But it does give you an appreciation of the resources we have available to pay the liability.
It is funny that DOR doesn't require us to report that as part of the grant.
Not yet.
Yeah.
Well, and also, we, we just went to the, what I find interesting, sitting here thinking about it, we went to the town to get pool for the complex, incur that liability, yet by virtue of our employment practices, we incurred an obligation that the region is responsible for paying, which in fact goes back to the town. So we've incurred a liability as a result of that, that employment agreement, so, but it didn't-
Yeah, I think it just speaks to the responsibility that the regional district has in terms of managing the finances as well.
Yeah.
Specifically around liability, because ultimately the liability goes back to each of the communities, and that liability cannot be addressed.
Yeah, we saw, and one of the things we pointed out, which also is just how much that liability changed. You know, we're a big part of it, it's just the interest rates and what that does to the liability. Only enough, it, I think it brought, as interest rates go up, it brings the liability down because it's less current, so it's gonna have an inverse effect, you know, if you have a big feeable impact in the last one.
We don't need to approve that, but we do need to approve another grant?
Yes, so Dr. Reinhardt will speak briefly about the genocide education grant and some exciting news.
So Brittany Burns is our department chair for the History and Social Science Department, applied for this grant on behalf of the, the high school. And in December of twenty twenty-one, Governor Baker passed legislation that requires middle schools and high schools in the Commonwealth to teach genocide education. At the time, they promised that there would be funding to support this legislation, and it came through. And so this, these grants are to support that. The, our, as it turns out, our middle schools also were awarded a grant separate from this, same, same grant, but a separate award. So we're actually working, there's vertical alignment and we're working together. And Brittany is playing a big role for the middle schools as well, which is great. They're using the funds at the high school to support professional development for the history department, looking at curriculum updates and updates to the alignment to a genocide education framework. That explains kind of the progression of how genocide occurs. They're looking at, they'll use some of the funding for supplies and for curriculum resources, for stipends to be teachers for the work that they're doing, auditing some curriculum and updating some curriculum, and also to pay for survivor speakers. So this year, the eleventh grade will all in June be hearing from a survivor of the Bosnia genocide. Brittany invited that you are all welcome to attend, and she's happy to send you information. And that's something that we will like, we will continue in future years, you know, featuring different survivors from different genocides. This is actually a two-year grant. The money that is accounted for today is, is for fiscal year twenty-three, which we are finishing. And then we have another award for fiscal year twenty-four. And for fiscal year twenty-four, we will be partnering with Facing History in Ourselves, who we have worked with for, for years and in many different ways, and doing professional development, also the, the genocide education. So this will be an ongoing effort. Very exciting, and big thanks to Brittany, who has led the way along with the rest of the department. We're very invested.
Yeah, and I just want to take this as an opportunity to, to highlight that Brittany also is, as a part of this work, or in recognition of this work, is, has been invited by Primary Source, which does a lot of different things, but often a lot of curriculum development, a lot of professional development. She's a keynote speaker at an event there this weekend to discuss this exact kind of work. So she's a real regional and probably, you know, leader in the Commonwealth on this work. We're very lucky to have her lead the work in this, in our, in our building. I was able to see her launch this work in, in her department, and it's very, it's really great.
Questions?
So I love the, so my daughter was just over in Bosnia last June, and she went to where genocide happened. And she was really, like she just, she just said it was unbelievable. It was fascinating, and she wanted to come back and talk to the teacher about it because she had Brittany, and she loves, loved her classes. But then, as we were traveling through Croatia, a lot of people from Bosnia come to Croatia, and they're taught that it didn't, like some people are taught that it didn't happen. So it's a fascinating conversation, and I really like, I could get out and come home for it. She would love to like listen to that. Yeah, it's a great, I like that.
And I, I guess I would add that this does connect to our work with the Anti-Defamation League and all of the work that we're doing in general around cultural responsiveness, inclusive communities. The part of what I think is really important about the way that we're teaching genocide is starting all the way at the beginning, like what are the ways that a society progresses? You don't end up at genocide without having gone through a lot of phases before. And there's a really strong research base and teamwork that they're building up of, so. So they're, so they're really making connections, you know, from behaviors that they might, you know-
Not do, learn from it.
Exactly, that we might be part of currently, and, and how does that connect to, or, or how do we prevent it? So it is great work, and we are very lucky to have Brittany. And speaking of ADL, I just want to put in one last bullet. Ben mentioned that our, our peer advisors went to the ADL conference, but I wanted to just point out that they didn't just go, but some of our peer advisors presented.
didn't just go, but some of our peer advisors presented at the ADL conference and did a great job. And so it was, they both enjoyed being participants, and then some of our high school students were presenters, which is really exciting.
So this is a DESI grant?
This is a DESI grant, yes.
I love hearing about it, and I love accepting money, but I'm wondering, like, do we always need to vote money from DESI? Do, okay. Interesting. Even, like, Title I's a grant. You did?
Yes.
Okay.
We did, we had a list of all the grants.
It was so far ago. Must have been the 10th hour.
Yeah, it's been a lot of grants.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there might be a lot more. Yes, that's why I was, because the state is putting out a lot of ones right now, which, like I said, I'm always happy to accept and hear about. I just didn't know it was coming from the state. Okay, so we need a vote to accept $24,500 for genocide education grant. Karen, I should, Kathleen, okay. Favor, and that's passed. Is there any other thing? All business? Any additional information on the, is that DEP?
Yes, so just a quick update on the athletic complex. As part of the permitting approval process required, the town, Northborough, Gale Associates went through the permitting process with the conservation commission in Northborough, we received appropriate permits. And we also, Gale presented the site plan for site plan approval for the planning board. Before the planning board's approval, they required us to get a third-party review of the materials being used for the Algonquin Athletic Complex, and to have an evaluation of the current soil conditions on the Algonquin Regional Athletic Complex as of today. So we contracted out with Western and Sanson to do that study for us. They came and they did samplings, and as a result, they collected at least 10 samples. Eight of the samples came back with results of PFAS concentrations that require us to report those concentration levels to Department of Environmental Protection. I think it's important to note that we need to report within 120 days. We are working with a third party to submit that report. But it's important to note that all PFAS concentrations were tend to more than 100 times less than the Massachusetts groundwater three district standard for direct soil contact protection of non-portable groundwater, so it's well below the state's levels. Western and Sanson also acknowledge that there's no significant risk to users, the athletic field, you know, has been identified due to direct contact to the soil, and that the PFAS concentrations in soils appear to be similar to those reported in multiple background soil studies in New England. But it does require us to report these concentrations to DEP and also submit a Massachusetts contingent plan with the DEP. So that is part of the site plan approval as something we need to do as a district moving forward with the project. And I did send the committee a memo on this, I think a month or two ago. I just want to bring it to people's attention. It is not going to delay the project, but it is adding another layer of reporting that we need to do to the DEP.
Questions?
Not a question, but I have a comment. When I saw that the posting, the planning meeting was on January 3rd, and it was a Zoom meeting, I said, I think I'm going to listen to see what's going on. And I also watched the subsequent meeting and missed the third one. And I just wanted to say, and I did share it with Greg, is that Gale Associates did such a fantastic job in their presentation and also answering the questions that came from the planning board. Planning board had some really good questions. There was even a, a buddy neighbor who called in with a question, and Kathleen Herbl and Matt King did a fantastic job on it. And it wasn't, it was just very collaborative, and they didn't have the answer, Gale Associates didn't have the answers. They said they'd get them the next month. And they just listened to everything. I mean, something so simple as, which is the way the trucks are going to leave? Okay, if they're going to go out to 20, okay, we're going to have a police officer there. They wanted to know that when they start doing the demolition, you know, how long is it going to take? And is it going to interfere with any of the sports that are here at the high school? And they promised that this was not, this was all going to take place in the summertime. So I just want to applaud the committee and administration for selecting and, and Paul's committee for selecting Gale Associates, because it was a really collegial and collaborative three meetings that they had, and it went very smoothly. And also want to thank the planning board for their thoughtful and decisive questions.
Anything else? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
The policies at this time, we have a meeting next week?
May 8th.
Eight.
Policy, July 8th.
Okay.
One of the recommendations of one of your fellow committee members was to add reminders into the calendar, invite some of those reminders happen on a daily basis when meetings happen.
Okay.
We adding that. Cheryl.
Yep. Any public comment, our last public comment option at this time? Personnel distribution?
Distribution of the personnel report as of April 26th.
Communications?
Could I say something?
Yep.
I, I just want to, in this final opportunity with Paul D'Agostino leaving, having been at Tartuffe with both of you the night before, only to learn that he had to resign on the week, I'd like to call your attention to the Harbinger article on Tartuffe, and the way that they talked about Mr. D'Agostino leading and ending the group with mindfulness. They felt that they were really heard, that they were, that there was this place that was emotionally supportive, a teacher that was emotionally supportive. And in light of the Metro West Adolescent Mental Health Survey, I think we've really lost a good teacher, and I would like to honor him. He's actually had to take a job outside of his, outside of theater, because he couldn't get a full-time job or a full-time enough job here. And I think we've really lost somebody good. And I keep hearing about it in NSPAC and in other meetings, and so that's a loss I'd like to acknowledge.
Could I make a public comment? I saw we didn't have school community reports, but I have one. May I do it this time?
Sure, yeah.
I'm going to lay us on to the Northborough Ed Foundation, and we had a meeting on April the 11th, and the high school students got such a rave review from the board members of NEF, because through Mike Marcerina and of course of yourself, Mr. Bevan, the athletes went down for Read Across America, and they read to the four elementary schools. And Mike worked with the four librarians. The NEF has a cornerstone grant that they will purchase the books for Read Across America every year. And besides the high school athletes being there, they got a community service hour certificate. And then the students from the four elementary schools in Northborough also wrote thank you notes back to the high school students. So it's a good collaboration going back and forth. And another one that I read about was that the ARHS best buddies visited Lincoln School, and that was back in March. And they went to, Lincoln Street is part of the social emotional learning day, and shelved, and shared their expertise. And I think it's great to see the communication and the connections going between the elementary schools and the high school students. I had seen Mike Marcerina at the town meeting on Monday, so I gave him all my accolades, so he's not here today. I told him I was going to talk about it Wednesday night. So I just think it's great, and thank you, Mr. Bevan, for your support in that, because the kids, I heard, were just ecstatic about seeing the athletes coming down and doing that. And the last thing to menia is that Teacher Appreciation Week is May 8th to the 12th, and up until May 8th, you can purchase a golden apple, and they're $15 each, or five for 50. And the golden apple is the certificate, and along with every golden apple, there will be a coupon for a free ice cream cone from Almond's Ice Cream, I believe it's out there. Westboro, yeah, sorry, I'm seeing the word. Sorry. So the order did, mine for those is May 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Communications?
So just a quick communication. So Principal Bevan and I had the COVID of attending the annual Scholars recognition, which is the Worcester County Superintendent's Association luncheon, where we recognize scholars across Central Mass. So Sarah Medina and Noah Lavelle represented Algonquin Regional High School, and it was a great opportunity to celebrate their success and also acknowledge the success of many students across the Commonwealth. So just congratulations to Sarah Medina and Noah Lavelle.
And so that brings us to agenda items. For next time, we have our, our public hearing vote for school choice. Are there any other topics? Is there, do we have?
Handbook?
Handbook, but do we have any presentations? So we were, I looked back into my old notes, we were actually scheduled to have math for this month, and that did not make it to the packet, uh, did make it to our agenda. It was on our table from October, and I talked to Beth Dor, who's our math department chair. She's all, was very happy to not have to present tonight, and is happy to present in May, and has her table ready to go. So they'll be in the packet if it's okay, if you want to hear, if everyone would like to hear about our math program. She'll be ready to do that, and happy to do it. Math sounds. Maths, yes. She's also taking the lead on that London school partnership, so perhaps we can incorporate some of that in there. And I think that would be exciting, because that will be very much about around our math program.
Does anybody else do to present in May?
Not, not from departments. We have math ready to go, and then health and fitness for the June. Any other topics to please?
I'd like to have a question.
Oh, for May? Oh, great.
I mean, come on, Charlie.
I put that in fifth. Okay.
I know.
Sorry, I'm making my own school right here, with all the things I'm missing. Okay. So we have no executive session tonight, so we can just adjourn with a motion.
Awesome.
Motion by Kathy, seconded by Kathleen, all of favorite, and that's minimal, so.